All these little gold pins were handed out and then it really was official. So it is 54 years old, not 75 or more. The young boy Gary Ostendorf who designed the flag, it was his design alone because in the paper I read where several high school students designed the flag. Each one designed their own flag. The program was sponsored by our Veterans Posts, VFW 9222, and American Legion 374. And although it says city leaders, they certainly were city leaders, but it wasn't a big bunch of leaders. This was our veterans wanting to have something that described the image of what they felt their hometown was after they came home from the war. So I just thought those few things might help you out. It's only 54 years old. And the outer side is a sphere to represent the world that we live in. Next to that, you'll see the oak leaves to represent Oakland County. And the rest of it, you pretty much know, but you may not have known those things. And I do have documents, photographs, newspaper articles, everything to back this up if anybody ever wanted to see them. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Hanson, Berkeley, Michigan. I sent a letter in to the mayor which may be in communications. I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Library. We really feel that this national campaign to benefit literacy is a wonderful program. Jack Blanchard, our councilman, built a little free library which is now in my garage, painted, ready to be installed. And we would like on behalf of the Friends to give it to the city and have it placed in one of the city parks in the hope that other citizens or other organizations in Berkeley would choose an additional park. This, I think, would definitely enhance the image of the city as a place that really sincerely promotes literacy. The Friends of the Library will maintain the one that they're donating. They will make sure that it's stocked with appropriate material. And hopefully you will accept the gift and we can turn it over to the media to let them know what a great city Berkeley is for literacy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we move along to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular 35th City Council meeting on Monday, June 1st, 2015. Warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1291. And ordinance number 00215, matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to rezoned property described as the north 40 feet of lot 148 of the Cottage Home subdivision from parking district to single-family residential district.
Is it a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadakel with support by Councilmember Edgar. Are there any additions, corrections, changes? Hearing none, then Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now we move to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on the regular agenda?
Matter of authorizing the mayor and the city manager to sign a contractual relationship between the city of Berkeley and Carrot Pass LLC.
Is it a motion to approve M 4515?
Move to approve, support.
Move to approve and by Mayor Protem Terbrack with support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. Sessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and welcome to our residents and visitors to our meeting this evening. Under this first item, our representative is perhaps running a little late, but he should be here shortly. But otherwise, if it's okay, I'd like to just briefly explain what Carrot Pass is all about and to let the council know that this matter has been reviewed and approved by the city attorney and he is recommending it for your consideration. I mean, very basically, council, you did receive a presentation, a very lengthy presentation, and we had a lengthy discussion on this matter as well at our last council meeting. But basically, what Carrot Pass is recommending is a, it's a mobile app in very simple terms. And some of the features that it has would be to do, allow the city to obtain information such as daily, weekly, or monthly analytics that will help us measure pedestrian and driving traffic patterns, for example. It allows us to identify where people are dwelling within our city during certain times, like events and things of that nature. Also provide us with some shopping demographic information. It's also, it's a secure mobile tool that our residents and visitors can utilize to purchase tickets to local city events, you know, such as that. We can also perhaps someday use it to help us monitor our public parking spaces. It's also a very user-friendly way to help us promote local events such as concerts in our parks, exhibits, all kinds of different events that go directly on someone's smartphone. And it's also an effective way to announce or to push announcements to various individuals such as if there's any kind of road construction alerts or any kind of issue that's happening in our city, a Little League program or whatever, things of that nature. I mean, there's really so many ways in which we can utilize this. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know the city attorney has also reviewed this matter. If you'd like to add anything else, Mr. Chris?
Through the chair, the proposed agreement has been reviewed. I would note for council that it does provide flexibility for the city from the standpoint that should it not be consistent with your goals or objectives, it does provide for the city to be able to terminate on 30 days' notice.
Very good. Any questions or discussion?
Just one final thing that Ms. Sessa didn't mention, it's free to the city.
Oh, that's right. Thank you, Your Honor.
The city is not paying anything for this. Our representative has actually just walked in. Oh, you're all set, don't worry. Don't worry. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? I know that
Michael.
You have just come in, Michael, and if you would like to come to the microphone, we're discussing the topic now.
So I apologize first, thank you for having me for a meeting today. Apologize for being a little late here. Thanks again. I think where we left off, we reviewed the items of discussion with regards to what's going to be delivered and what's acceptable from the office. We're very comfortable moving forward with how you represented the wording for that and really excited to move forward and supply carrot to the city.
Very good. And Councilmember Kadakel?
Mr. Mayor, not a question but a comment. I was walking, I downloaded it after we spoke at the last meeting. I was walking around Royal Oak and it's amazing, like, things are already popping up on there.
That's excellent. That's great to hear. That's great to hear.
Good to hear. And I could think of two reasons why you might have been late.
So they wanted to be here. They thought I was going to go onstage and stuff. So they wanted to be here, so I'm glad that they're here. But, you know, some good news from last week is we made the official announcement with the Michigan State Fair, the Fifth Third Bank Michigan State Fair. And that's a huge exposure for Carrot and the whole state, we had gotten recognized from the entire state for that, so it's really great.
You also received special recognition yourself, didn't you? A recognition from the governor, perhaps? I remember that.
Yeah, for the top 50 company to watch in Michigan from Governor Snyder. Yes, we were there. And this morning, I was, the 10,000 Small Business Program Goldman Sachs in Detroit asked me to speak at an event next week, or in two weeks, I'm sorry, to welcome some different delegates from around the country to talk about entrepreneurship and different companies and startups in Michigan. And they're using Carrot as a way of, hey, this is what we built in here in Michigan. It's not all Silicon Valley. It's, you know, we can actually, we have great resources here, great talent in the state. We have great universities with U of M and Lawrence Tech and Oakland University, and that's where my whole staff is from. So it's a really great story that I love sharing.
Very good. Thank you for being here. Any other questions from the council? Well, then, hearing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 4515?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read the next item on the agenda?
Ordinance number 00315, matter of considering the first reading of a franchise ordinance to grant consumers power in company its successors and assigns the right power and authority to do a local gas business in the city of Berkeley, Oakland County, Michigan for a period of 30 years. Set date certain July 20th, 2015.
Is it a motion to approve ordinance 0315?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman, support by Councilmember Kadakel. Ms. Sessa.
Well, it's been 30 years since this franchise agreement has come before the city of Berkeley. I know that in the past, this matter has been placed before our voters. However, this time, it is, it is being asked to be reviewed by the city council. And I know that legal counsel has reviewed this agreement very thoroughly. And he'd be happy to answer any questions, Your Honor. I don't know if we have a representative. There she is. Okay. Can you, second me. Oh, I'm sorry. Ursula Warren.
Hi.
Ursula Warren, she is the representative from Consumers Energy and she will explain the franchise agreement. And again, council, this is just a first reading. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ursula Warren, area manager for Southeast Michigan Consumers Energy. The franchise agreement is simply a reinstatement of what we previously had had approved back in 1985. I think you all were delivered the documents. And so it simply just gives us permission to do, it says to, Consumers Energy Company and its successors the right and power, authority to lay, maintain, and operate the gas mains and pipes and services along the highways, streets, alleys, bridges, waterways, and other public places in to do local gas business within the city of Berkeley, Oakland County, Michigan for a period of 30 years. So basically, it just gives us permission to continue doing the work that we do every day to provide safe and reliable gas to the city.
Very good. Well, thank you for that quick summary.
Well, you surely didn't want, I didn't think you wanted to go through the entire whole.
That's right. You are correct. You are correct. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Your Honor. Briefly, this is required under Michigan's constitution for a franchise to be issued. The local unit of government does have to issue it. The significant difference this time around, the proposed franchise as proposed is revocable versus non-revocable. That's the only substantive difference, and that's why it does not have to go before the voters. It is approved as the form. It does allow for the continuation of what is already here. The utility provider, consumers, will continue to serve the residents of Berkeley. And so from a legal standpoint, we recommend that council approve it.
Very good. Any other questions from the council? Well, thank you, Ursula, for being here and explaining it to us. And now, since there are no additional discussion on this matter, we are ready to call the roll on ordinance 0313. Oh, 15, excuse me.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read the next item on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R 1815, matter of approving a resolution to authorize the West Nile virus expense reimbursement request.
Is it a motion to approve R 1815?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Edgar.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Sessa.
Council, this is a matter that comes to you, I think, the past few years. And to give us a brief summary of what this program is all about is our Public Works Director, Mr. Derek Schuler.
Good evening. This is the typical item that we have this time of year for West Nile virus expense reimbursement. So every year, we put Larvicide in approximately 1,500 catch basins throughout the city, and Oakland County reimburses us for a portion of the product cost for that Larvicide. So this is a partial reimbursement, but it's still a reimbursement. You can see by my summary how the dollar amounts have changed year over year. But this is the similar resolution that they request from us, and I will forward it on to them, and then we'll get our reimbursement check. We have completed the Larvicide placement, started about three weeks ago, and it has been completed. So we've hit all the 1,500 catch basins and all the public right-of-ways, so it has been completed. And it's got a, I believe, 180-day residual. We're using a different product this year, a more green product. It's got 180-day residual. The previous product we were using had 120-day residual, so you see it will, it'll take us through the summer. And again, this is a more green product and was recommended to prevent resistance. The mosquitoes can gain resistance to products, so it was recommended that we switch it up and stay with this product for a few years and then switch again. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our Director of Public Works? Straightforward item that we deal with every year, and it's nice that they have a green product that is environmentally more appropriate. So that's very nice. Seeing no additional questions, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R 1815?
Baker?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read the next item on the agenda?
Motion number M 4015, matter of approving the 2015 LED streetlight conversion purchase agreement between Detroit Edison Company, DTE, and the city of Berkeley at an initial cost of $66,084, with DTE contributing labor and a material rebate.
Is it a motion to approve M 4015?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadakel, support by Councilmember Edgar. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. As a quick point of order here, I would like to at least let the group know and decide. I do happen to be employed by the DTE Energy Company here, and so I just wanted to raise that awareness. And although this is not part of my day-to-day operations, I wanted to give this group an opportunity to decide the degree to which I can participate in the conversation this evening.
Is there anyone who thinks that Councilmember Baker should abstain? Seeing none, then we move along. Thank you for making us aware of that.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Sessa.
Okay. You know, Your Honor, this is the, I believe, the second part of this, or phase two, as they say. I'll let our director give you more detail on this, but I concur with his recommendation and recommend the city council consider this second phase. I think it's been very good for the city. It has saved us some significant dollars, and we are very pleased with the program. So with that, I'll turn it over to our director.
Thank you. Thank you. As Jane mentioned, this is the second phase. Last year, we had the initial phase of the LED conversions, and it was very successful. I have seen the results firsthand, which is an approximately $1,500 savings on the streetlights. So this is the conversion to LED streetlights for all the streetlights that are in the city of Berkeley, the vast majority of which that DTE owns and maintains, and the city of Berkeley pays for the monthly power, and that's an important point. So we do not own the majority of these lights. DTE owns and maintains them, but we pay for power. It is truly a partnership between the two of us. And the first phase was a resounding success. Everything that I was told came to pass. I saw the new bills. I see the $1,500 savings each month. And we're looking to do another phase in the next fiscal year after July 1st to do phase two, which is a very similar project to phase one. 260 lights impacted. This would essentially change all of the mercury vapor lights over. So we will, this will be a very, phase two is really the low-hanging fruit of what we're looking for. We may have a phase three next year, but these two initial phases are really the low-hanging fruit for us from a financial standpoint. There's the payback on this is a little bit less than four years, which is, in payback terms, is wonderful. So after 3.8 years, it'll all be gravy. We'll have paid for everything that we put into it. So very successful program. I'd like to introduce Reginald Brown, who's here from DTE. Reggie has helped me through this process with the first year and second year. So Reggie, maybe you can say a few words about the program as well.
Sure. My name is Reggie Brown, Account Manager for DTE Energy. And I could truly say that this definitely has been a pleasure in terms of putting together a economic package, not only for cost efficiency, but cost savings as well. As Derek mentioned, we attacked the lowest hanging fruit from the very beginning, starting in 2014. And this is the last of that succession plan in regards to removing all the mercury vapor off the system. There still remains some opportunity for consideration if you elect that you want to convert and change from an aesthetic standpoint of converting the high-pressure sodium. The cost savings is still being leveled to where it's an acceptable level, but in some cases, the overall payback may not be as attractive. In some cases, the high-pressure sodium still should be considered just from an overall aesthetic standpoint as well as for energy efficiency. So with your approval, we can move forward with our final design scope and move to construction as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Brown? Councilmember Edgar?
Thank you, Your Honor. When you speak of an aesthetic value, what are, the light quality or the way the, I'm not, could you clarify that for me?
From a lighting standpoint, the LED is a lighting diode, so you get a total, total different variation of a light quality, meaning it's more of a white light as opposed to a high-pressure sodium fixture. In this case, from a mercury vapor, it is still somewhat of a light blue or a blue rendering. But from a more pure light, from an LED standpoint, you get a more aesthetic or pleasing light.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items? Thank you, Mr., oh, Councilmember.
Thank you, yeah, thank you again, Your Honor. Thanks for being here and for all that you do for Berkeley. I love seeing these kind of things come along. Could you briefly describe, just in terms of the timing, how long would this phase take if we were to start? Does it impact on the residents, you know, that kind of stuff? Can you give us a little bit of a feel for the nature of the project and those types of things?
Sure. The nature of the project as it was last year, it begins from the beginning of January, and all our construction efforts have to be completed by no later than November 30th. And that is because it is heavily tied into the construction component as well as the EO rebate. So final construction has to be completed by no later than, no later than June 30th. However, I believe last year, we would have been able to kind of fast-track that project in terms of, I think, maybe August, September or so, to meet that deadline.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to DTE for this incentivized program. I think it's good for our city. Last year's phase one went really well, and there's no reason why this one won't be similar. And over time, we will save significant dollars. So it's a good program. And thank you for being here, and thank you to DTE.
Thank you as well.
Any other discussion of this? Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 4015?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read the next item on the agenda?
Motion number M 4115, matter rewarding a contract to CPR Connection of North America Incorporated, 5803 Stone Hill Court, Clarkson, Michigan 48348, for the purchase of six automated external defibrillators, AEDs, at a cost not to exceed $8,913.18 from account number
Is it a motion to approve M 4115?
Motion to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Stedman with support by Councilmember Kadakel. Ms. Sessa.
Council, this is a very important item that we're asking you to review. I know that our Director of Public Safety, Chief Eschman, has gone through some very, very tough review of the bids that we received. But he is here this evening with us to give us a quick summary of his review and to explain his recommendation. Chief Eschman? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sessa. I would like to introduce, for anyone who doesn't know, Officer Scott Smith.
Hello.
I am not a paramedic. I do not speak this technology language. Scott is a paramedic, so if there are any technical issues, I'll defer them to Scott.
Gotcha.
Okay. It's time to replace our automatic, excuse me, automated external defibrillators, we call them AEDs. Simply an age issue. After eight years, they have to be scrapped. To that purpose, a request for proposal was disseminated, and we received five bids. Of the five bidding companies, four offered technology in which separate sets of pads are applied for adults versus children. So you have to have twice as many sets of pads. In the fifth bid, CPR Connection of North America, they offered the Philips Heart Start technology in which one universal pad is used, one set of pads is used. It provides a much better technology. Instead of fumbling or searching for the appropriate pads, the instrument figures it out by you inserting a key, pushing it in, and it'll switch to pediatric mode, at which time the unit's voice coaching instructions will cite the proper process to use. And the current is automatically then adjusted between the two. We prefer that technology for obvious reasons. It's safer, it eliminates potential for human error, and it's a little bit quicker. In reviewing costs, the lowest bid, coincidentally, is the Philips Heart Start from CPR Connection of North America. Slightly, it's within a few dollars to the next lowest bidder. But going forward with pads, it's important to note that one must purchase twice as many sets of pads for the competing technology. Each year, each two years, we would have to restock, as pads have a two-year shelf life, with 26 sets for the competing technology, only 13 sets for this technology. Why? Because with each AED, you should carry two adult plus two pediatric. Or with the Philips Heart Start, you would simply carry two sets of universal pads. Additionally, the cost per pad, per set of pads, is remarkably more than double in the competing technology. At the two-year point, for instance, for example, we would be buying 13 pads with the Philips at $35.10 each, $456. With the competing technology, we would buy 13 adult at $89, 13 pediatric at $79, for $2,187 and change. So you can see, restocking at the two-year So you can see, restocking at the two, four, and six-year points for $456 is a lot less expensive than spending $2,100. So you need the 13th, that odd one is in the station. In case you use or simply open another set of pads, then you have to restock that particular So you can see, it's a much cheaper alternative. I hate to say cheaper, we should say less expensive. There's nothing cheap about it. But I'd like to also say that in assessing these bids, the single important issue is the safety of potential victims needing the deployment of the AEDs to save their lives. The technology offered by Heart Start from Philips provides quite an edge in that area. The fact that it's also less expensive is an added benefit. I would have to say that if it were more expensive, I would probably be standing here arguing for the more expensive because it's better suited for our purposes. And so with that, we're recommending that we purchase the Philips Heart Start from CPR Connection of North America. Now again, if there are any technical questions, Scott will be happy to answer them.
Well, one that's not so technical, Ed, we keep one of those in each cruiser?
We will keep four of them generally in four cars. They stay in the station and then get taken out as the officer, you know, assumes his shift. Another one will be stored in a fire truck and another one inside the station for use there. Prisoners, other things that, you know, people that are distressed in the lobby or, you know, across the parking lot, whatever. That's how we deploy them. We currently have six. We want to replace them with six.
We certainly have a vested interest also in making sure these defibrillators work and they're the best that we can get as residents of the city.
Yes.
And so don't expect any opposition up here on this matter. Are there any questions, Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I fully agreed with that, yeah, absolutely. And I certainly hope that we never actually need to use this technology on anybody, but if we do, I'm glad to know that we'll have top-notch equipment there. My question, I don't know if it's particularly technical, but in terms of the... Our capabilities of leveraging or using these devices, is there any different training required or certifications different than the existing equipment?
No really additional training, just more familiarization with the new equipment, just so every officer knows how to deploy it and the differences between the new equipment versus the old equipment. But the basic process is still the same.
Okay. And then would there be like a transition where we phase out the old six and phase in the new six in conjunction with that additional awareness or exposure as appropriate?
As soon as we get the new six in, that's what we'll put into service and then we'll just take the other ones out of service. That way the officers don't have the two to mix up and have any error to deal with, so...
Excellent. Thank you.
Makes sense. Councilmember Edgar.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there any plans to do something with the old six or are they obsolete? Are they...
They're obsolete and we do have a few that are still operational right now. We haven't discussed any plans currently yet to...
So we can't sell them or...
We could check to see if we can possibly do that.
I can't imagine...
Training, that's another option.
Training purposes, yes.
Training purposes.
Will there be training given for the officers for the new machines?
Yes, we'll do that in-house and along with our normal training that we do for MFR level, that will be incorporated with the training, yes.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Kadakal.
That was going to be my question, but also, I don't know if you can answer this. How often have we had to use these, let's say?
Roughly, we figure about eight times a year at least where we're using it. There's more times that we actually will open up a set of pads because we might have a certain medical situation where we may suspect that it's cardiac arrest, but the pads are open and once they're open, we can't use them again. We have to put new pads in the service. So roughly about eight times is what we...
I mean, if we use it one, it's worth it, but I was just curious. Thank you very much, both of you.
Very good. Seeing no additional discussion then on this very important matter for all our residents, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 4115?
Kadakal?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And thank you for being there with those defibrillators when we need them.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the next item on the agenda?
Motion Number M 4215, matter of approving the adoption of the newly revised Michigan Freedom of Information Act FOIA procedures and guidelines and the FOIA public summary as mandated by the state legislator... I'm sorry, legislature effective July 1st, 2015.
Is there a motion to approve M 4215?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Edgar with support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sessa.
You know, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I believe the city clerk in her statement made it very clear in terms of what this is all about. I really don't have too much more to add. I do know that the state legislature reviewed this very carefully and obviously all cities, townships, and villages are now required to abide by this and the deadline, as she stated, was July 1st of this year. I know that she has been working very closely with our city attorney to make sure that the proper documents and policies are being adhered to. I've been meeting with the city staff as well to make sure that they are familiar with these new rules. They will have them. In your package, you've received a copy of those procedures and that policy, so that is what we will all abide by. I don't know if the city attorney wishes to say anything else, but...
Yeah, so basically, this brings us into compliance with state law.
Correct, with the new state law, which becomes effective July 1st, Your Honor. It addresses issues with respect to the required policy and guidelines. There is, as in your material, which I know you're familiar with, a written summary and it addresses issues capping certain costs associated with FOIA requests, provides some modifications in connection with appeal rights for a party that is requesting certain public records. And there are in your materials also some proposed forms that implement the new guidelines and policy.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa.
Mr. Mayor, we will make sure that we post this on our website as well so that residents can receive it. I know I've spoken to our city clerk, because she's the one that's been attending several classes, and I know other key staff members such as our deputy clerk has also attended and also our IT coordinator has also attended the sessions to make sure we're all in line with this new law. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to her and give her an opportunity to just simply briefly explain to the viewing public what this is all about, if I may, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher.
Thank you, Jane. Just to let you know, Mayor and Council, just a few changes is if the public body has a technological capability, we are required to provide electronic documents through email going forward. Also, our sheets are going to be 10 cents per copy and we can charge for contractual services, but it is only equal to six times the state minimum wage. As far as the labor charges, we can only charge up to 50% of the employee fringe benefits. Public... If the public body has a website and the information is available, we are required to provide that information to the requister. Our charges can be reduced for the labor cost if the public body has not responded in a timely manner. Public body may ask for 100% deposit from those requsters that have not paid in the past for FOIA requests. Our fines have increased. The plaintiff may be awarded from 500 to 1,000 or the... For the arbitrary and capriciously... I'm sorry, capriciously violated the act, an additional civil line, civil fine of 2,500 to 7,500 is... Can be charged to the public body if there was an intentional fail to comply with the act. And those are the few...
Few of the highlights.
Yep.
Very good. And we need to be in compliance with the state law coming up and that's what this vote is going to be about. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 4215?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakal?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read the next item on the agenda?
M 43... Motion Number M 4315, matter of amending the city's fee schedule regarding FOIA photocopies as outlined on the attachment.
Is there a motion to approve M 4315?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadakal with support by Mayor Protem Terbrach. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, again, this is done in accordance with FOIA and we're simply asking the city council to approve the two miscellaneous fees as outlined. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Very good. Any questions for the city manager? Mayor Protem?
Not a question, but just for the folks at home. 25 cents for photocopy, 10 cents for the regular photocopies we just mentioned, just so everyone's aware on what we're voting on. Yep.
Very good. Seeing no additional discussion, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 4315?
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakal?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read the next item on the agenda?
Motion Number M 4315... I'm sorry. Motion Number M 4415, matter of making appointments to boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M 4415?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Councilmember Baker with support by Councilmember Kadakal. Now, we have a number of appointments to make here this evening and let me suggest that I go through the list of all the appointments and then if anybody has any specific item to discuss along that, we can come back to it. Beautification Committee, full three-year terms expiring July 2018. Enella Endan Mayaisku. Board of Review, full four-year terms expiring July 2019. Wayne Friedman. Building Code Board of Appeals, full five-year term expiring in 2020. Jeff Rysinga. Communications Advisory Committee, three full-year terms expiring July 2018. Shirley Hansen, Tammy Polk. Downtown Development Authority Board of Trustees, full four-year terms expiring 2019. Lawrence Gallagher, Ellen Simonian, Marjorie Simmons. Historical Committee, full three-year terms expiring 2018. Karen Brattlehurst, Shirley Hansen, Juanita Metis. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, full three-year terms expiring 2018. Mike Kirby, Gary Polk. Planning Commission, full three-year terms expiring 2018. David Barnett, Joe Tangeri. Tree Board, full three-year terms expiring 2018. Margaret Grassa, Caitlin Ring. Zoning Board of Appeals, full three-year terms expiring July 2018. Paul Evans. That is a significant list of wonderful volunteers in our community and our city is enriched by their willingness to dedicate their time, their talent, their energy to advance our city and we are all indebted to them. Is there any individual discussion of anybody on that list that anybody wants to bring up? Hearing none, then, are there any general comments that anyone would like to make? Seeing none... Oh, Councilmember...
I was just going to echo your sentiments about the volunteers and thank them for coming forth again to help our city succeed the way it does. Without you, we couldn't do it.
Thank you. Then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 4415?
Baker?
Yes.
Edgar?
Gratefully, yes.
Kadakal?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read the final item on the agenda tonight?
Resolution Number R 1915, matter of authorizing amendments to the fiscal year 2014-15 operating budget, those operating funds as presented.
Is there a motion to approve R 1915?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadakal with support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, this is something that appears before you. I did say monthly or bimonthly, but as needed, please know that this is done in accordance with Public Act II of 1968 as amended. I'll ask our finance director, Mr. David Subouda, to go over each of those amendments with you. Mr. Subouda?
Thank you, Mrs. Sessa. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. It's great to be back. Before you this evening, you have 12 budget amendments affecting eight operating funds with the majority of the amendments taking place in the general fund. We're amending revenues and we are amending expenses by line item and I'll walk you through what we're doing here. In the general fund, we're asking for $134,000 in new revenue and on the expense side in the general fund, we're asking for $79,397 in new net expenses. So some line items are going up, some line items are going down. Then when you look at the special revenue funds and the enterprise funds, which is part of the eight operating funds, seven other operating funds, we're asking for $71,000 in new revenue across those seven operating funds and $102,000 in new net expenses in those seven operating funds. So item A, what you have here is general fund revenue, is the $134,000 that I just mentioned. Where we're seeing the biggest increase is in building permits. There, even net of refunds, the trades are booming here in Berkeley, building is up, people are improving their homes and permits are up a lot. We've been very busy in building. Also, the ancillary services that the public safety department provides such as fertilizer fees, audio/video fees, those services are being utilized quite a bit and we are seeing an increase in revenue there. On the downside, with the court moving over to the city of Royal Oak and traffic and other citations going down and with the court going over June 1st, we're seeing a reduction of about $104,000 in revenue from the court. Not as bad as I had thought, so I'm pleasantly surprised. If we're going to take a hit, okay, I'll take that. We also saw some insurance investing. Unbeknownst to us, we received a refund check from Blue Cross and Blue Shield to the tune of $80,000. I was pretty happy about that and that's reflected in your amendment also. Turning to page, item B, we're going to go across multiple general fund departments and you're going to see negatives and increases in the clerks. Now, I'll focus on the totals and then if you have a question, you can feel free to stop me. City clerk expenses are going down $2,700 across various line items. City hall expenses in general are coming down another $9,400. Public safety dispatch and public safety animal control, there's some up and down here, but it's a net zero effect. Public safety operations is going up by $15,875. Big expenses here are overtime and the air conditioning handling is in here, so that needs to be repaired. It's an emergency repair and that's all factored into this $15,875. As you move along to the building department, as I spoke earlier, revenues are up, so are expenses. Those guys are out there inspecting and we're looking at $54,000 more in expenses and that's one of the biggest numbers here today. Public Works operation is down $1,500. However, Public Works Garage is up 41.5. They are maintaining and rebuilding equipment. They're doing it on an overtime basis. They're stretching out the use of that equipment and we're getting a greater return on our investment by rebuilding and fixing our vehicles and fleet. Street lighting is down $19,000 as Mr. Schuler came to the podium earlier today. Direct reflection on the LED lights. That's it, $19,000. It's a wonderful credit to the budget. Recreation Department, very small adjustment of $5,900. Library expenses down a little bit, $1,300. Information Technology, $8,300. We're not going to make a capital expenditure because we're going to be moving the equipment to public safety, so we've eliminated a capital expenditure in information technology. The last item in the general fund, Public Safety Retiree, some legacy costs, $5,000 and you can see when you total it all up, the building department's the big item, 54 out of 79,000. Now onto the Major Street Fund, item C. Little known is the state of Michigan has appropriated out of their general fund money for roads to local units of government. Berkeley on the Major Street Fund saw $42,800 in additional state of Michigan dollars coming D, you can see expenses are going up, going down here. What I wanna point out is the winter maintenance expenses out of the lion's share, forty-two thousand, three fifty-seven. So what does that, what does that entail? That's plowing the streets, that's making the necessary repairs, and the equipment that is utilized in plowing the streets, that expenses is what's driving that forty-two thousand dollar number. When you look at item E, this is the local street fund now, this money can only be spent on the local streets, and we have some major, and a lot more local. We see fifteen eight in state revenues coming in. And then you see the lion's share of expenses, again, winter maintenance, thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And the majority of that, again, is supplies and equipment rental. The good news is, in both funds, winter maintenance is done, so we won't see any more expenses there. Item G is all revenues out of the CDBG, eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, various program revenue that's coming in that we thought was coming in in prior years, but is now coming in this year. In the arena fund, very small number, on the expense side, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars between line items. On the water side, we're looking at twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. Lion's share here is labor. They're working on water main breaks, they're, they're maintaining the system, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars on the, on the water side. On the storm side, that's going down, sixty-four hundred, sixty-seven hundred dollars for a net eighteen grand increase. Recreation revolving, the camp program, I cannot stress how successful this program is, is going right now. I'm very impressed. We have a record number in the program. It's very, it's wildly popular, and you can see fifteen thousand more in revenue in that line item. We had a few reductions there for a net twelve hundred to the fund, but the camp program is booming. Expenses are down a bit in Pillow Polo, Dream Cruise, and miscellaneous programming. Excuse me, expenses are up, very small, approximately eighty-five hundred dollars across those three departments. Last but not least is the Downtown Development Authority. It's a carryforward, deals with the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, four hundred dollars. They didn't use some money in thirteen fourteen, and that money's being carried forward into fourteen and fifteen, so we can pay the bills and get the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, the remainder of the dollars due that we had promised them back in thirteen fourteen. And your honor, that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any and all questions.
Any questions for our Director of Finance? It seems as though you have left no questions unanswered.
Thank you, your honor.
That's what thoroughness does all the time. Thank you for the level of detail and the precision with regard to these numbers, and the adjusting that we do every month, making sure that there aren't surprises when we come toward the end of the year. And we thank you for a comprehensive job.
Thank you.
Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R nineteen fifteen?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakul?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting, and I believe Councilmember Kadakul is up first.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanna say that Dad's Club opening day was a success, and the weather cooperated, and to see all those little kids there, and, and, I mean, there must have been five, six hundred people there, and it was great watching them march from the high school and how excited they were. Attended today's ice cream social from the Friends of the Library, and I was reminded that they started summer reading today, I guess, and today, so anyone interested should check out the library with that. And Art Bash and Lids for Kids, again, what a success, weather cooperated. I know some people said, oh, you should do this for two days, and it's like, Sunday proved why we don't do it for two days. But there were people, not just from Berkeley, but from all over the place. So that's about it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Redgore?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor Protem Turbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like my colleague mentioned, and other colleagues probably will as well, the Art Bash and Lids for Kids were, they were a tremendous success, even though there were some, some slight weather concerns early on, and may, may have kept some people out earlier in the morning, but it's my understanding that they did come out in the afternoon, and the weather did hold off. And, and, you know, those courageous public safety officers that got in the dunk tank even though it was in the low sixties, congratulations to them. I have been there before, and let me tell you, it is cold, and you actually prefer to be in the water at that time instead of out of it. Onto Summer Fest, we are officially here. Today is the first official day with, for students to not have school, so summer vacation officially begins today. Kicking off our Summer Fest events, at least I'll give you the events now before, prior to the next meeting. Tot Lot Night, June twenty-fourth, at the Tot Lot from five to eight P.M. Again, that's June twenty-fourth, from five to eight P.M. at the Tot Lot. It's kind of our kickoff night. The Community Garage Sale, June twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, from one to six P.M. And nine A.M. to three P.M. respectively on those days. Again, June twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh is the garage sale. July eighth, from nine A.M. to two P.M. is Senior Activity Day. Again, July eighth, from nine A.M. to two P.M. is Senior Activity Day. And just before our next meeting, the Community Picnic, July eighteenth, from twelve to three P.M. Again, the Community Picnic's, one of those events that also seems to grow and grow every year, and we certainly hope for tremendous weather. I know they'll have a dunk tank there as well, I'm sure a lot of folks will, will get in. I was in it last year, and I saw some of you in the audience, they're lined up, and that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. Again, it's July eighteenth, from noon to three. Summer is officially here, kids are out of school. Sorry, parents, it's that time of year, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, your honor, and to continue, the gratitude and appreciation for the, the Art Bash and Lids for Kids, agreed. It was a great event with great engagements from not only the, the volunteers and the employees that were a part of all of that, but the businesses that helped make it a success, all the vendors that, that helped showcase and, and market their creativity and their contributions to that which enriches all the society that we live in. Fantastic stuff. I'd also like to give a, a special thanks out to, to those of us involved in the, the Robina Plaza project. So there was a special little, one of the stands there was to talk about what we can consider and think about doing with the Robina on north and south of Twelve Mile. Fantastic engagement from folks to come in and ask questions, and look at the drawings, and, and write their comments, you know, with different ideas and things to help make that a success. We had great support from the city, from the DDA, from local businesses, and a special thanks to folks from the Michigan Municipal League, including Sarah Kraft, who came out to help support us again this year. This is the second year of engagement on this effort, and the conversation continues. Coming up soon is the, the Planning Commission session on the twenty-third, where this was scheduled to be one of the items for discussion. Again, this isn't the finished plan or anything like that, but to continue the conversation about what could be in store for us as a catalytic signature destination in our downtown, which I think could be a fantastic thing for all of us. Continuing with the, the league for just a moment, Michigan Municipal League, MML. As you guys know, this is, this, I'm, I'm on the board, this is my third of, of three years. So my tour is nearly, nearly complete here. It's sad, but it's been fantastic. We have a strategic retreat coming up this week, so I will continue to do everything I can to help represent this city and our region at the state level, where we look to see what we can do to help advance all of our communities, and continue to bring great support, like we saw at the Art Bash, here to help move our, our particular initiatives forward, so very pleased with that. And finally, I'll just wrap up with a quote from Steve Jobs. Steve Jobs said, "Innovation has nothing to do with how much money you have. When Apple came up with the Mac, IBM was spending at least a hundred times more on their R and D. It's not about the money, it's about the people you have and how you're led." And so, so as, you know, there, there are differences between a for-profit business and a for-service government, but, but some of the things that, that we, we do share is the opportunity to find and leverage ways to, to innovate. Innovation is at its core, finding, creating value by doing new things. And one of the things that we find here that is a success is just like these kinds of events that we've talked about, a degree to which we can take a little idea and see what works, and give it a try. And if it works, do more of it, and continue to think about how to change and evolve and mature that, that over time. You know, as they say, without change, there can, there is no innovation, there's no creativity, no incentive for improvement. And, and I think that the many things that Berkeley has done well over the years is just that, seeking opportunities. And although I focus on technology stuff a lot, with like the mobile app and some of the other kinds of things that we've been doing, this Carrot Pass thing is another example in that, in that string of technology innovations that we're bringing to the city. We do it all around us, right? When I, when I, again, share our, all of our sentiments in terms of the, the folks, the volunteers that help make all these committees a success, that was on the item earlier tonight. Each of those committees, all those folks are finding new and inventive ways to help move our various agendas forward. And so I think that spirit of innovation is something that we've demonstrated again and again, and I'd like us to, to continue that, continue that journey here. That's what, that's what helps us move forward, you know? If you're not moving forward, then you're falling backward, they say. And I'm all for, for continuing to move forward, so, so with that, I'll let the, I'll let the conversation move on.
To Councilmember Stedman.
Okay, well, first of all, the Art Bash was absolutely wonderful. And I think it looked, it looked like there were more people there, and there were more artists there, more booths. It was, it was, and it was just the weather cooperated, of course, that was really important. In terms of the library, summer has arrived, and the Berkeley Public Library is ready to keep your mind challenged. Thanks to the support of the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library and Vibe Credit Union, the library is offering summer reading programs for children, teens, and adults. Registration for our summer reading programs begins today. In fact, the ice cream social there from six to eight tonight was the kickoff point for the library. So please call the library at two four eight, six five eight, three four four oh, or stop by to register and find out additional information. And there's a couple of new programs coming up. Evening programs, Once Upon a Puppet, which is a family puppet show, is Tuesday, June twenty-third at seven o'clock. Puppeteer Nancy Penvos will present an original puppet show of Jack and the Beanstalk. So also, please call the library or stop by. eBooks and Morith Library, this is to get, if you wanna get downloadable eBooks, audiobooks, books, or magazines for your iPad, Kindle, or other device, go to this free class and learn how to do it. Anybody who does not know or does not feel at one with their iPad or technology. And I just looked at Phil. Okay, that's, that's all for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of items, I know the council has mentioned many things, but just a quick reminder that our Berkeley Parks and Recreation Department is also having their eighth annual Community Garage Sale. There are two dates for the public to sign up. The first is Friday, June the twenty-sixth, and we're looking from one P.M. to six P.M. And then Saturday, on June the twenty-seventh, from nine A.M. to three P.M. The deadline for signing up is June nineteenth, and there are various costs and fees, so please go to our website at berkeleymish.org for, for more details. Also on our website, I'd like to remind everyone of our, of our survey that we're doing for our branding program that we're working on. So please, the survey is set up already, please go to the website. And I wanna thank former mayor Mabel Fraser for the update. I'll make sure that we get that to our representatives as well. Thank you very much. And I too wanna thank MML for their good work. It was a lot of fun. I, I think every year, well, this is the second year that we've done this, and it's so nice to hear the residents comment about our work, about the things that we're doing, and, and just to sit down and talk about many, many things. And it's really nice, I, I really enjoyed meeting with the public, it was a lot of fun. I almost lost my voice, there's so many people talking. But, but again, I can't thank all the residents and, and just visitors to our community that were interested in, in learning more about our city. So, so thank you, and thank you, Sarah Kraft, as well. Also, I wanna share with you that just today, I, I got this report from our IT coordinator. The Free today made an announcement in their newspaper, and I guess they do this online research site that they have, and they revealed the twenty-fifteen best placing rankings throughout the state. And you can't know how proud I am to inform the city council that the city of Berkeley was ranked as one of the top twenty-five Michigan suburbs to raise a family in the state of Michigan. And we are number seventeen, so that's not too bad. But I, I am, I am so proud, so congratulations to our city, and I'm very, very proud of that. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, your honor, I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Christ?
Thank you, mayor. Very briefly, last week, Friday, excuse me, Thursday, the Michigan Court of Appeals issued a opinion with respect to clarifying a dispute between our neighboring communities to the south as it relates to the operation and expenses associated with the Forty-Fifth District Court. I bring it to the council's attention because it highlights the value of having a written agreement, which this council entered into about a month ago between the city of Royal Oak with respect to the Forty-fourth District Court. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. I will be providing opinion, a copy of the opinion to the city administration for their review, and just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. And I see that our state rep has just rushed in from another meeting. And without objection, he will want to say a word or two to the residents of our city, so, Mr. State Rep?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I, I am coming from a couple of different meetings, actually, just before this, so I'm glad that you're still here and, and moving along. Just a few things real quick, also to congratulate you, number seventeen. I saw Mayor Protem Turbrack shaking his head, 'cause he knows that we're gonna be higher than seventeen soon, and probably should be rated higher than seventeen, right? Raising a family here, so congratulations on that. I won't take up too much time, just want to briefly talk about some upcoming community conversations that we have coming up. At once titled Coffee Hours, but I don't know if there will be coffee or not, so just in case, we'll call them the Community Conversations. But we have seven of them coming up, so one in every community. And just want to let you all know when they are, so that you can plan, and you can come to one, or you can come to all. And you don't have to live in, in the community to come out to, to speak with me, voice your opinion, ask any questions, hear what's going on in Lansing. So if you don't mind, I'll just go through those real quick, so that you have those dates. July sixth, which is a Monday, at ten A.M. at the Huntington Woods Community Center. July eighth, which is a Wednesday, at six-thirty at the Hazel Park Library. July tenth, which is a Friday, at ten A.M. at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center. July thirteenth, ten-thirty A.M. at the Oak Park Library. July fifteenth, at six-thirty at the Ferndale Library. July, I'm sorry, that was July fifteenth, I don't know if I said that. July fifteenth, at six-thirty, the Ferndale Library. July sixteenth, ten-thirty A.M. here at the Berkeley Library. And July twenty-first, Royal Oak Township Hall, two-one-one-three-one Garden Lane, which is a Ferndale actual mailing address. So those are the upcoming chats. And if you didn't have a chance to write those down, I encourage you just to go on my website, and you can sign up for our e-newsletter, and keep you apprised of what's going on in Lansing, and also when we have events like this. So if anyone has any questions, all of you know how to reach me, but for those at home that are watching, again, the best phone number is five-one-seven, three-seven-three, zero-four-seven-eight. Email is robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. And the website is wittenberg.housedems.com. And if you go on there, there's a little box on the top right, you can put in your email, and then you can get added to the, to the email list. And then we'll keep you up to date on what's going on. So that's pretty much what I wanted to come talk to you about. There are some things going on in Lansing that I could talk to you about, some stuff that, you know, just to be aware of. I sent some letters to all of you, I'm sure you were following House Bill forty, fifty-two, which is a terrible, terrible bill, and just an extreme overreach. State government trying to come in and tell our local communities what to do, and what's in their best interest, which is wrong in my mind. You know, what's best for, for Berkeley might not be what's best for a city in the Upper Peninsula or elsewhere throughout the state, and vice versa. And I think it should be up to locally elected officials to know what's best for their community. So unfortunately, that passed out of the House, I definitely oppose that. So that's something to be aware of, and then there's a few other issues, but again, not to take up too much time tonight. I'll go over most of those at these different community events that we're hosting. So I encourage you to come on out and, and, you know, ask any questions, offer up any suggestions. And if there's anything I can ever do, please, that was my information, reach out to me, whatever I can do to help. And if I don't know the answer, we'll point you in the right direction, but I'm always happy- happy to help. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, this time of year, um, our students are, as has been pointed out earlier, completing the academic year, but many are graduating. I'd like to say a word of congratulations to all of the students who are graduating and now beginning to embark upon in the exciting journey through college. We, um, congratulate their parents for all of the support that they give those young people and for the teachers whose dedication and inspiration leads them to want to pursue advanced, uh, learning in, in college. And for those who don't go to college, there are important opportunities available as well. It is not actually necessary for everybody to go to college. And, uh, there are enormously brilliant people in our community and in our society who make an enormous difference and never saw the inside of a college. Sometimes, I, I'm a university professor, so, uh, we tend to, from our perspective, sometimes overstate this. Uh, our power is, uh, beginning to, uh, not be happy with the comments I'm making. Uh, but nonetheless, we wish all our young people, um, um, great success in their career of choice. And, uh, then on another, uh, topic, Coolidge Highway. Coolidge Highway is, uh, moving along on schedule. Outside is completed, north side, uh, northbound traffic will be, um, done within short time. Um, we're certainly sorry for the inconvenience that it causes, um, people who use Coolidge Highway, but, uh, it'll be worth it. It will be, will be the very smooth gateway to our city and we will not have the comments that were being made in the past about, uh, a holy entrance to the city. So, uh, with that, then, uh, we want to thank all the volunteers once again who make this such a wonderful community, such a wonderful city. And to be ranked number 17 for families, young, place to raise young families, there are train- changing trends in this community. There are increasing numbers of young families across the city and their expectations of the community and their contribution to the community will change it in innovative and creative ways. And we welcome all of them and their energy to be part of the effort with the branding study and so many other things that we do here. So, we thank all of them and welcome them as well. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yep.
I did forget one quick communication before the next council meeting, uh, on July 13th, our honorable mayor will be celebrating his birthday, so happy birthday.
Well-
And I second her motion.
Yes. So, it has been proposed by Councilmember Stedman that we adjourn and, uh, seconded by Councilmember Kadekko. Uh, thank you for reminding me, I try to avoid counting. Uh, these, these numbers are getting high. But Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. The June 15th meeting of the 35th council is adjourned. Thank you.